Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Butler to adopt the agenda. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And our very first thing is to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're looking to, let's see, here we go. Whereas, the community problem of domestic violence has become a critical public health and welfare concern in Anoka County, and whereas, domestic violence is a crime, the commission of which will not be tolerated in Anoka County, and perpetrators of said crime are subject to prosecution and conviction in accordance with the law, and whereas, over thousands of women, men, and children have and will continue to access assistance from Alexandra House Incorporated, a domestic violence service provider, and whereas, domestic violence will be eliminated through community partnerships of concerned individuals and organizations working together to prevent abuse while at the same time affecting social and legal change, and whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas, during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Anoka County organizations will inform area residents about domestic violence, its prevalence, consequences, and what we, as a concerned community, can do to eliminate its existence. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this fifteenth day of September, two thousand Item two is to approve the minutes from the September second meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move we approve the minutes from the September second, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
Second. Motion by Butler and a second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
And that motion carries. One abstention, Councilmember Novak. Item three, there are actually five items on our consent agenda, and this is the first one of those. This is to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-five, approving a gambling premises permit for Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League at Classic Bowl, one-one-seven-oh-seven Round Lake Boulevard. The city received a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League for Classic Bowl. This gambling premises location had previously been handled by the Coon Rapids Lions Club. The Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League currently operates at two locations, Sammy's Pizza, Doing Business, and Five Four Lounge, and The Well. With this additional premises, the gambling organization will still remain in compliance with City Code five dash two thousand and five, which limits the number of premises permits for one organization to no more than five. State charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved or denied by the City Council, so we're looking to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-five, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League at Classic Bowl, one-seventeen-oh-seven Round Lake Boulevard. Wow, that was like Sally sells seashells.
Woo!
All right. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve an agreement with the Star of the North Academy. Star of the North Academy, thirteen-thirteen Coon Rapids Boulevard, is located adjacent to Al Flynn Park, and for some time, the school has utilized city property for recreational activities. City staff agree joint use of public facilities for the benefit of students is in the best interest of both parties, and as such, city staff coordinated with school leaders to memorialize a city-approved use and future maintenance of the park, including city-owned property and equipment within the park, and to ensure current insurance coverage is provided to the city annually. And I'll just mention that this is, can be canceled by either party with thirty days' notice. So, so we're looking to approve the agreement with Star of the North Academy for use and maintenance of Al Flynn Park. Next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-four, setting a hearing date for miscellaneous assessment levies, two thousand and twenty-five dash two. The City Council must set a public hearing as required by state statutes, and at that hearing, the City Council may refer appellants to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. I believe the word we're looking for there was will, refer appellants to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals will then give their recommendation. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on November sixth and make a recommendation to the City Council. At the November eighteenth council meeting, staff will incorporate the process in the required mailing to the property owners. These assessments include services provided to taxpayers, which in most cases involve code enforcement violations. The terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed, and the proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. So we're looking to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-four, miscellaneous assessments declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment roll, and ordering the public hearing for October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, on the proposed assessment roll. Next item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. This we do at every council meeting. They've prepared, the staff has prepared the attached list of electronic payments, and we are receiving the schedule of electronic payments from August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, through September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And the next item is our last item on the consent agenda, and this is adopting Resolution twenty-five dash one-oh-one, accepting the DWI grant from the state of Minnesota. We've been doing this for several years. Recently, we were notified that Coon Rapids has been approved grant funding for the position from October first, two thousand and twenty-five, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, to a maximum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for salary benefits and DWI conference registration fees. The Coon Rapids Police Department has developed a work plan and budget approved, and the award covers a full-time sworn officer's salary and fringe benefits. The squad car operating costs, uniforms, and weapons are not covered by the grant, so we're looking to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash one-oh-one, accepting the DWI grant from the state of Minnesota. And that is our consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Geisler. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Consent agenda, item nine-five, setting the hearing date for miscellaneous assessment levy. Could you repeat the date of that assessment hearing?
Me or somebody else?
Somebody maybe. Did you say, was it, was it November sixth?
November sixth.
Thursday.
That's the Board of Adjustment.
The Board of Adjustment meets that day.
Oh, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on November sixth.
Gotcha. October seventh is the key date. That's when you have your opportunity to object.
Okay. Thank you.
So October seventh is when they would have to have their appeal in writing to the council or to the staff.
Correct.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. That moves us up to item eight. Consider planning case twenty-five dash nine. Consider adoption of ordinances twenty-three, twenty-nine, and twenty-three, thirty, amending City Code Sections eleven dash six-oh-one and creating City Code Section eleven dash six-oh-seven. And this is really adding a new low-density residential district to our ordinances, something called LDR three. Does council need any more information on this? We had our introduction for the last meeting, and certainly discussed it at workshops.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move that we adopt ordinances twenty-three, twenty-nine, and twenty-three, thirty, amending City Code Section eleven dash six-oh-one and creating City Code Section eleven dash six-oh-seven for the LDR three, Low Density Residential Zoning District, and authorize summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Is there a discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-six, amending the two thousand and twenty-five budget for housing programs. This we just discussed at a workshop prior to the council meeting. Mr. Brown, you want to just hit the highlights real quick for that, or?
Yes, I certainly can. So basically, the city's housing loan programs are operated through the local housing trust fund. In the two thousand and twenty-five budget, we have budgeted one point five million dollars for new loans that would be originated. The fund balance in that fund exceeds three, three million dollars right now. The programs have been well subscribed this year. We're coming up on that one point five million, so are asking for a budget amendment for an additional four hundred thousand dollars, so a total of one point nine million. We feel like that will get us through the rest of the year. We know that these programs are popular among many homeowners and well utilized in the city and want to make sure that we don't need to hit the pause button at any point, and also want to make sure that this trust fund is sustainable in the long term, so that city residents will have access to these resources in the future.
It's well, it's well-used by our residents, that's for sure. Any questions of Mr. Brown on this, or does somebody want to move it forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-six, amending the two thousand and twenty-five budget for housing programs.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by who? Butler?
I think it's him.
Okay. Motion by Geisler, second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I just want to mention that we did have a lot of discussion about this, not only at the workshop beforehand, but other places. And these projects, yeah, they are incredible, and it's so nice to see that utilization working to improve all of these different, sorry, all of these different procedures.
Homes, maybe.
Yeah, thank you. He was making motions, and I was wondering if he was trying to get my attention. So no, I obviously support this, and I really do think that a lot of people should look into it if they haven't already.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Could I ask Matt to just explain a little bit about the fundings coming in from the current, you know, the recent sales tax housing fund?
That's, that's right. A majority of the fund balance in the local housing trust fund comes from, well, decades ago, the city actually got special bonding authority from the state to issue mortgages back in the nineteen-eighties, when interest rates were very high. Those original mortgages were repaid many years ago and were really the seed money for this fund. In recent years, we've also been able to supplement that fund with the metro, metro area sales tax housing aid that the legislature created a couple of years back. The city has also applied for and received another smaller grant from the state to supplement that over the next year or so as well.
Very good. And the reason I wanted to ask that is because the, you know, these are great programs, and it's really not costing the taxpayers of Coon Rapids anything other than the sales tax contribution at state level, so.
Yeah. And it's benefiting them if they're doing work on their homes for, with lower interest loans.
Absolutely.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item ten is to consider Resolutions twenty-five dash ninety-seven and twenty-five dash ninety-nine, accepting a Department of Public Safety Auto Theft Prevention Grant and amending the two thousand and twenty-five general fund budget. Captain Harmon, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, happy to be here to talk about this real briefly tonight. The police department has applied for and received a grant for the years of two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-seven from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Auto Theft Prevention Program. The grant will assist the police department in purchasing equipment that has not previously been budgeted for. The total grant is for twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand for each year, two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-seven. We will use the grant to lease two Phlox Flex movable AL, AL, sorry, ALPR cameras. These will be used to investigate auto theft and assist in help, helping to recover stolen vehicles. They can be moved to different areas of the city based on need, and they will supplement our current system of permanent cameras leased by the city currently, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions of Captain Harmon?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash nine-seven, accepting the grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, and to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-nine, amending the two thousand and twenty-five general fund budget for the lease of two ALPR cameras.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
These, these cameras are fantastic, and they've been, they've been very beneficial in our city and many other cities, and it's real nice to, even though it sounds like, you know, they'll be kind of temporary for now, nice that we can move them around for a little targeted patrol when we have some hotspots. I know they've been really beneficial with recovering stolen cars, so I think it's just a fantastic thing.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item eleven is to consider approval of professional services agreement for parks and recreation master plan update. Mr. Gunderson.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. Tonight, asking you to approve the consultant for the parks master plan update in the packet. You saw that our proposal includes four areas. That would be the base, base structure for the proposal, and then two alternates with Boulevard Plaza and Al Flynn Park. We sent out to five different consultants. We had four put in interest in the program at that time. We selected three to come in for formal interviews, and at that time, we asked them for quotes on the scope that we gave them, and they were all in the same ballpark. And so then, at that time, we brought them all in for interviews, and it was our team's decision to go with the one and negotiate with ISG, and we fine-tuned down to this proposal tonight.
And ISG is not who we used the last time, correct?
No. So in two thousand and one, we used Broward Associates, who in turn joined with WSB in two thousand and twelve. ISG is new to us.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Gunderson on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Gunderson, what, what brought ISG to the fore for staff, specifically, you know, considering we, we tend to take inertia with previous experience, so go, not to say it's good or bad, but just curious why.
Yeah. As a team, we felt that ISG met our scope the best and understood the project from day one and knew what we were looking for. Additionally, this time, we have a little more emphasis on the programming side of recreation, which in, in the last master plans was more heavy on the parks themselves, and we felt that ISG had expertise strong in that area.
Yeah. Any, what?
Evolve.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Evolve.
Yeah, no, no, no.
And, and, Mr. Gunderson, could you kind of explain the, the difference between what's in the base and then what's in the alternate sections of the bid, bid package?
Yeah. So the base would be the traditional park and rec master plan items, which is maintenance and replacement. Along with that, we'll be looking at a GIS management dashboard, which will allow us to better track our inventory of our entire park system, so they will go out and GIS the amenities in all of our parks. The five-year recreation programming plan, that'll be valuation and critiquing of our, what we do for programming events, look at the cost recovery models. In that, I've included Sand Creek, economic impact of that park as a regional destination for tournaments, and then looking at our organizational structure. It'll include trails, which is traditional, as well as the communication engagement part, which would include stakeholder support meetings, pop-up events, that public engagement part. The two add-ons are Al Flynn and Boulevard Plaza. Those two parks would be contingent on decisions going forward as far as looking at the different funding sources, and if we were looking to move forward with those two parks and then get master plans for them.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Gunderson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
Mr. Gunderson, I know that we emailed a bit, and I also emailed with Mr. Semwell a bit. You know, the, the description talks about how we probably would need to adjust the two thousand and twenty-six budget just by hair if we're doing this, and I just want to make sure I get my numbers right. It'd be an adjustment probably of around sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars when all is said and done.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Butler, that is correct. If we did the full scope of the contract that's before you tonight, it would be one hundred and seventeen, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. We had budgeted twenty, fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-five back in May and June. We were working on staff budget. We had put another fifty thousand dollars into two thousand and twenty-six, not quite yet knowing what was all going to be included in the scope of services. Ultimately, the total proposal's around one sixteen. If you back those other two alternates out, it's a little less than eighty thousand, so that's something if we ultimately do all of the tasks, and it is one hundred and sixteen. Prior to council adopting the two thousand and twenty-six budget, we would want to adjust that line item for consulting services to match the total value of this contract.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Gunderson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I move that council approve the professional services agreement, including Exhibit A, outlining the scope of work and fees with ISG for completion of the parks and recreation master plan update.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I, I would just like to emphasize my support for looking at both alternates at the same time, especially with the other items we're thinking about. I, I think having a whole comprehensive plan is better, especially with those two major parks, having a, how they work together, how things have changed between developments between, you know, two, two thousand and twelve and now, and the usage at Boulevard compared to Al Flynn and all that. So I, I would, I, I would encourage us to consider the extension all the way out and just get it done at once, so.
Yep. I agree. Okay. Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item twelve is to consider Resolution twenty-five dash one hundred, amending the city's adopted two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule for the ice center rates. Ms. Ring, you want to cover this one?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the time of year we come to you to ask for the city's fee schedule to be amended for the ice center. Our season kicks off September, runs through March in earnest, so we have a busy facility right now. And so we do a market study, and we are asking for rates to change a little bit, as you'll see in the chart, from our prime evening and weekend rates, two forty-eight to two fifty-five. And then we have a weekday rate of one hundred and fifty dollars, and these are all per hour, our outdoor ice, our spring, summer, non-prime, and our non-prime outdoor rink. So if you look at those numbers, they're basically inflationary, and with our market rate study, there are three other facilities that are about the same rate as us, two lower and six higher. So we like to try to be in a, a middle ground there and, and find the right spot for us. We think this is the right place to be. And then we did some other adjustments to our room rates. The room rates at the ice center have been quite low per hour. There are a lot of different amenities. There have been some upgrades to some technology with monitors and display features, new furniture. So we did a comprehensive look at what were we charging at the ice center compared to some of our other facilities. So the chart in front of you shows some slight changes in some of those categories, or some of the categories were just a touch more to get us more market rate where we felt we needed to be. And with that, these are the main changes that would be part of the ice center fee schedule as we move forward into the next season here, two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six.
Yeah. These all seem really reasonable. I mean, they're like five dollars, or three dollars, or eight dollars, and, yeah. Council, any questions from Ms., Ms. Ring?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move we adopt Resolution number twenty-five dash one hundred, amending the city's two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule and establishing the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six rates for the Coon Rapids Ice Center.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the motion carries. And then you can just carry on with item thirteen, consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six ice center user contracts. And these are basically the same things, they just reflect the new rates that we just established, correct?
That's exactly right. The only difference is that we're going to come back to you at another meeting for a few more of our users. We're just finishing up some fine details. But yes, these are the contracts for the Anoka-Hennepin School District and the Minnesota Wild Sled Hockey. They have some storage with us that they pay a fee, and then, of course, the high school programs use our facility, and they have fees related to their ice and locker rooms. So we want to get those through and see if you'll pass those tonight, and then we'll be back again for the rest of our user contracts.
Sure. Any questions on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I recommend, I should say, I move that City Council approve the proposed two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six Coon Rapids Ice Center annual user contracts with the Anoka-Hennepin Independent School District number eleven and Minnesota Wild Sled Program, and authorize city officials to execute accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Is there a discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the motion carries. And we are up to the open-mic public comment portion of the meeting. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think we can move beyond that, and I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. And I'll bet I can go back to Ms. Ring with the upcoming pet fair, or would that be a Ms. Lenzmeyer thing?
I would love to talk about the pet fair, Mayor, if you would, would like me to. It is coming up this Saturday, September twentieth, from ten a.m. to one-thirty. We want to make everyone aware, it is a new location. So we are at the Coon Rapids Civic Center. We have a mix of indoor and outdoor space. The purpose for that is weather challenges if they happen, as well as there'll be some efficiencies with supplies and setups, so we're trying this. It's also the tenth anniversary of this event, so that's pretty, pretty exciting, I think. There's a lot of new things that our team has been working on this year. We have a dog pick-a-toy game, crazy hair artist for kids and dogs, pup cups, face painting, pet adoption opportunities. It is very dog-heavy, but you can bring your cat, other critters, as long as they're approved here in the city. We welcome all well-behaved animals to come to the event.
Well-behaved animals.
Well-behaved, leashed, and we've never had a problem. We have such a great turnout of families and their pets, and it's really, really a good time. So let's hope for good weather. I'm hearing scattered showers. Ryan's part of the team, too. We're hoping it's going to be absolutely perfect, so come on out. It's, it's free. It's a great opportunity to just have some free family fun.
Yeah. It's always well-attended, and it's always a great event, so. Except for last year when the rain.
It was an intense weather year last year, yes.
It was, yep. All right. Any other business? When was the, when was, I think, you know, we've got another council, do we have another council meeting yet? No, no, this is it. October fifth is Kendall's tenth anniversary. And since that's in a city facility and a city-owned restaurant, it seems like we should mention that.
Yeah.
Their tenth anniversary will be celebrated on Saturday, October fifth, from noon to five p.m. with music and all kinds of things going on. Councilmember Butler.
Mr. Mayor, I think Saturday's the fourth. It's my dad's birthday, so.
So they changed it just for that?
I'm kidding.
So it's Saturday, it's Saturday, October fourth, then?
Yes, sir.
That's probably what all the, the wincing I was, was noticing. Okay. Saturday, October 4th is Kendall's. We can't recommend two days? All right, just one. Saturday. Any other business to come before council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
We might as well remind folks of why we're here on Monday instead of Tuesday. There's an election that's due tomorrow, so if you haven't voted in, it looks like Ms. Lenzmeyer might have to come, but she would like to make.
Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, yes. The special election to Bill House, seat 34B, is tomorrow. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and will close at 8:00 p.m. for those in precincts 5-4 and 5-5, the southern portion of the city. If you have questions, give us a call in the clerk's office, and we'll help you out.
5-4 and 5-5, those are, those are the two precincts?
Those are the two precincts, correct.
All right, I saw another hand, I thought. Councilmember Armstrong?
I was just going to mention, I don't, I know it's not a city Coon Rapids event, but Scott R. Bromley Memorial Pumpkin Classic Car Show and Fall Fest is this Friday, September 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00. Scott was a long, long time resident of Coon Rapids. He and his wife, Elizabeth, have had this event going for a number of years, and it's a great event for your kids, all kinds of rides and slides and bouncy houses and yada, 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 and the car show as well, so, just mentioning that.
It's hard to believe, but there is not a council meeting between now and the Coon Rapids Rotary Sampler coming up Thursday, October 2nd, at Bunker Hills Event Center. That is usually the event of the fall, the event of the season to attend. And is it, how do they, how would they find that, on Facebook or on the web?
Sure, Mayor and council, you can visit the Coon Rapids Rotary Club Facebook page. There's an event page for the sampler. You can also go to Eventbrite and search for the Coon Rapids Rotary Sampler. Tickets are $40. You can buy them at the door. You don't need to buy them ahead of time, but if you want to, you can buy them on Eventbrite. All proceeds go to the Coon Rapids High School Programs to include their youth-first programming, Respect Retreat, and their biomedical program, so. It's a really fun event, a lot of games, music, sampling of beverages and food, and good time ahead by all.
Lots of great food, and, yeah, it's a great, great event. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Mentioned a couple of weeks ago, but one more shout-out for the Rhythm of the Rapids at Anoka-Ramsey Community College on Thursday, this Thursday, September 18th, from 5:00 until 8:30. This is a fundraiser for the Anoka-Ramsey Foundation. They provide assistance to students at Anoka-Ramsey Community College. It's a fantastic event. Look up that, their musician, Martin Zeller and the Hard Ways. So wonderful event, beautiful location, beautiful location, very nice event. It's their second annual.
I wonder if he'll do a, I want to drive the Zamboni. He doesn't like playing that one anymore. All right, any other business to come before council this evening?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
A motion by Butler and a second by Novak to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.